How are you? What are your kids' names?
John.
John and...
John is fourteen and Lucas is twelve.
Yeah, no, it's more, I, because I was, it's for the adults and for the kids. But I'm planning some games for the kids in practice. I'm thinking about if I'm gonna do some for the adults. That's, I specifically wanted to do it, that's why I'm saying Halloween.
Right, yeah, I know.
And I was like, is anyone gonna bring something here? But I wanted to do something, because, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, I hope you guys can make it.
Okay, cool.
And all... Good morning.
Good morning, you guys.
Okay, we're gonna have to draw the line when the IT people exceed the population of the board of supervisors.
Brain thrust over here.
Mike, you want us to leave in the flag sleuth?
Sure.
I like that trend. Morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you'd please stand and join me in the flag sleuth led by Supervisor Ennis this morning. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Joining me is looting our great American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Well, the last day of October already, it's hard to believe, it remained last week of October. Supervisor, on the Board of Supervisor Matters, will take up first, go to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you Supervisor Worthley. First thing, last night I did attend the Taste Treats event in the city of Tulare for, to fundraise for the Tulare Historical Museum, and it was a great event, and it's actually kind of fun. I get to do something that's not irregular for me, and that's bartend. So I was pouring wine last night and serving beer, but I actually figured out a way to get twice as much done in the same amount of time, and you just use both hands and pour at the same time different glasses, so. That was one from Mr. Ennis down there.
Pour and drink.
Pouring wine when you're the bartender, gotta work quick, long lines. There's a Community Resource Fair this week in the community of Allensworth. First of all, I want to thank all the various county departments that are gonna be participating and showcasing their services for members of the community, and then also our different community partners in the View Energy Partnership along with other utilities. They're working together to put on a resource fair for the community of Allensworth, that will be great. And it takes place this Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Allensworth School. And then this Sunday, November 1st, everybody please remember that the time does change as well. There is a groundbreaking event for the Grande Oak Village, which is on the piece of property just north of the Outlet Mall, right off of Cart Mill, that will be taking place again at 10:00 AM on November 1st. And it is a welcome project, in addition to the community, it will provide basically a community for senior living. And it's been a long time coming, that project has kind of sat vacant for quite a while, so it'll be good to see that finally get built with the intersection being done.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Supervisor Cox.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, we had approximately 400 students from throughout the county attend the convention center here in Visalia and started the Step Up Challenge Event. We trained the students on their importance as an individual and in their community, that they can make a change, and then started the process of helping them to pick service projects within their communities. So very well-attended, very fun event. Thursday, by way of report to this board, the Consolidated Waste Management Authority did vote to disband and are moving in that direction. Approximately a three-month process, there's a little over a million dollars left in that fund. We voted to leave a hundred thousand dollars behind to do any cleanup, final audits, things of that nature. The county will be receiving a refund of approximately $420,000. This week, started by last night, the Step Up Lead Program started, we're doing Visalia, Tulare and Porterville this year. We met with the Visalia students last night at the CSAT office and chose 37 students to start that program. Actually had 101 sign up and 57 showed up for the interview, so it was a very successful. Tonight, we will be in Tulare at the College of Sequoia's campus, and then Wednesday night, we'll be in Porterville to interview students, and that will be at the Porterville Campus or CSAT? At the CSAT Office there on Henderson. This Wednesday, I have Retirement Board, and this Thursday, there is a meeting I'll be attending on behalf of the county and TCAG, with TCAG, for a potential rail project in the city of Visalia. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Sheedah.
Last Thursday evening Supervisor Cox and I attended the Sequoia Council Boy Scout Annual Banquet, recognizing the distinguished citizen of the year, which is Harry Tao, and it was a great event. Tonight, I'll be attending a meeting in Plainview, we're gonna go over the proposed park that we're gonna establish in Plainview. And next Tuesday, I will not be at this meeting, because I will be attending a meeting for California State Rail Plan Advisory Committee, which will be the first meeting of this group. And what it's doing is to really put a state rail plan in place. When we did our California Freight Movement Plan, it was kind of a abbreviated plan that we put in for freight movement, so this one's gonna go into great detail about moving freight by rail. And I guess this, well, this Thursday, I'll be at the Sequoia Yosemite RC&amp;D Meeting in Clovis. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, I'll be attending a tour of the southeastern Tulare County farms that have lost their surface water, and we'll be looking at the effects on the whole area of what lack of thousands of acre-feet of water can do to a ag community. Another thing that is starting to show up is the fact that we're drilling all these wells in Tulare County, they're not only, but we're drilling deeper, and in many cases, bigger wells, and now that's affecting Southern California Edison, because the deeper you go, the more powerful the pump has to be. So they're gonna have troubles kind of balancing their power in the future till they get this thing figured out, these more powerful wells taking more power from the grid. And of course, another problem they're gonna have down the road is all these solar farms coming onboard. How do you manage your grid with solar versus all the other ways that you develop power? So those are some of the things that Southern California Edison is looking at in the future. They've got a real problem on their hands with grid problem. That's all I have, thank you.
Last Tuesday Supervisor Cox and I met with the Ad hoc Committee and the Retirement Board to discuss our future commitments to the retirement, and they had changed actuaries, the Retirement Board, and it seems like whenever there's a change of actuaries, it's always holding your breath as to what are the implications for the sponsoring agency. It's usually not good news, and this was no surprise, it was not good news either. There were apparently some oversights by the previous actuary, and as you know, at the end of the day, the county is responsible for the plan in terms of making it whole. So the results are probably about a one and a half percent unexpected increase to Tulare County, and the issue is how to go forward, how to implement that. It could mean as much as six or seven million additional dollars, and so we will be coming back at a meeting and working out some sort of strategy of how to deal with that. But one of the problems with defined benefit plans are wonderful things for us who receive defined benefit plans and benefits when we retire, but the unfunded liability, any kind of unexpected costs, overruns and so forth, always fall back on the sponsoring agency, and those can become quite problematic in the future. On Wednesday, Thursday, I attended a State Water Control Board informational meeting on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in here Visalia at 210 West Center Street. It was very well-attended, there were probably 100 people in attendance. And the bottom line from the presentation that came from the state in my mind was making sure that no piece of land is left outside of a planning group, because if you have, when you, the requirements are that we, when you have your basins, your overdrafted basins, you have to create an agency, a governmental entity, to handle that sub-basin or basin. If one piece of property is left out, your whole plan can be considered deficient, so. And the other part of that was, you do not want to let it fall to the state, because they will charge for everything, every cost imaginable to recover their costs and indirect costs, and so I can only imagine what those costs would be back to primarily the farmers of this valley. So it's very important that we make sure that as we move forward, every piece of real estate is, because the county is responsible for those areas which are outside of irrigation districts, the white areas. So that was a very informative meeting, and again, it was great to see all the people who attended. Today, I'll be meeting with Martha Guzman from the Governor's Office and along with some others regarding the Kings River Alt Irrigation Project, which is a surface treatment facility designed to facilitate drinking water for five communities up in the north part of the county. Our difficulty there has been getting the funding to move the entire project forward. Much work has been done, but the things such as securing the real estate, the property where the facility will be located, and some other agreements have to be reached to use the current canal as a conveyance mechanism and so forth, it requires extensive contract negotiations and so forth. Those funds had been pulled out of the last grant funding, and so it could push the project off for years if we don't get those funded right now, so we can actually move on all fronts. So that's gonna be the purpose of the meeting today, and we're looking for some support from the Governor's Office to push the Water Control Board to fund those things so we can move forward. This Thursday, I'll be meeting with the Supervising Academy luncheon as their speaker. I look forward to that, it's a great time to interact with some of our up-and-rising people within the county who've gone through the process of leadership, and I look forward to that. And that's all I have to report today. Supervisor Cox?
I did forget one thing. In yesterday's paper, there was an article in regards to a change order on a well, and that was mistakenly reported as the Mooney Grove Well. There's a correction in today's Times Delta, it says that Tulare County Board of Supervisors will decide today whether to amend a contract with a well driller to pay $260,000 to extend by 500 feet a domestic well at Bob Wiley Detention Facility. A story in Monday's Times Delta stated the wrong location, that wrong location is not mentioned in the paper, but it was listed as Mooney Grove, so. By way of correction, I know we had some folks kind of upset yesterday, and it was incorrect in the paper, and thank you, Mr. Cassium, for correcting that today.
And what had happened there was that the well that was drilled at the Bob Wiley Detention Facility, they were looking to get 1,000 gallons per minute, and they were only able to achieve about 600, so they went down another several hundred feet, and I haven't heard the results of when that week we achieved our objective, but that was the purpose for that. Thank you for that. All right, at this time, we will take up our public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning on matters that are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are welcome to come forward, and please give us your name and address, and we have three minutes to hear you. Seeing no one, we will close the public comments, and we'll take up our consent calendar. We do need to take item number 22 off of, just for separate consideration. Mr. Chair? Yes. Michelle? Item two. Oh, the most important thing, I already had it marked off, and I was ready to move on. Pardon me, thank you, thank you, Michelle. Well, I just wanted to keep them around so they could listen to the rest of the meeting while they were here today. We have a presentation given by the Public Financial Management regarding our annual administrative report for the Millennium Fund, and we all look forward to this report, and I apologize for missing that, Ms. Brandt. Thank you for being here and coming down from San Francisco to give us this report, and... Good morning, Allison, please come, you can use this microphone you like right here if you want.
I talk fast, so when I saw you skip through that, I thought...
You didn't realize how fast you could be, did you?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you once again for inviting us here this year to provide a review of the Millennium Fund program. I'm joined by my colleague Lauren Brandt, who you've met before, as well as Angela Chen. I'm just gonna give a brief overview, oh, should I go? Excuse me, a brief overview of the interest rate environment we've seen over the past year. The year ended April 1st, 2015, as that's the report date of the Millennium Fund program. And then I'll talk about the program itself, of course, give a little history, and then the characteristics as of today, as well as strategies utilized in the portfolio. So interest rates over the past year have been very volatile as they react to various economic releases, both in the US and globally, and also in respect to what the Federal Reserve is going to do with the Fed Fund's target rate. So year over year, the chart on the right shows the US Treasury yield curve as of April 1st, 2014, beginning of the year, the Millennium Fund report year, and April 1st, 2015. And you can see the longer end, five years and over, interest rates moved lower during that time period, mostly due to investors moving into treasuries as, due to global concerns, investors seek the safety of treasuries when there's any risks out there, and also, there hasn't been much inflation lately, as you're probably aware, and so that has had downward pressure on interest rates. Of course, for the Millennium Fund program, we don't invest in securities beyond five years. It's more the intermediate area of the yield curve there, from about three months out to three years, generally is where we invest for the Millennium Fund program. And that area of the yield curve moved higher over the year, and it's moving higher awaiting the Federal Reserve to start raising their Fed Fund's target rate. It's been at zero to 0.25% since 2008, and recently, over the past year or so, the Fed has indicated they may be ready to start to raise that Fed Funds rate. And earlier in the year, it was expected that that will likely happen in September of this year, and so we saw interest rates start to move higher in anticipation of that. The Fed did not raise interest rates in September. They are actually meeting this week, it's not expected that they will raise interest rates this week, possibly before 2015, but possibly not, you know, there's a lot that's weighing on the Fed in terms of when they're going to raise that rate. But in anticipation of the Fed raising that rate, we've seen interest rates on the shorter end of the yield curve start to move higher. So the Millennium Fund program, just a brief background, of course, began in 1999 when the county issued $45 million of bonds to be funded by the annual tobacco settlement payment that you all receive. In 2006, the bonds were refunded and put with a private placement, and that really saved the county a lot of costs in terms of letters of credit, rating, and things like that, that the county had to pay annually. Those costs went away with the private placement. The borrowing rate on the bonds is one-month LIBOR plus 25 basis points. So as of the report date, that rate was 0.43%, that's about been the average over the last year for the borrowing rate. And then the goals of the program, which have been in place since the program began, are to achieve and maintain parity, to generate an investment return that exceeds the borrowing cost, and then of course, to control risks so that the program can continue to be successful. So as of April 1st, 2015, the value of the program was $55.3 million, up from last year, from $54.8 million last year. In August of 2014, the county withdrew $2.5 million as permitted by the bond documents. And the payment this year was $3.86 million, the payment the county received as a part of the tobacco settlement. And that value, that $3.86, is not included in the total as it came after the April 1st report date. So I mentioned the county withdrew $2.5 million in 2014, and did so again in 2015. Per the bond documents, the county is able to withdraw the lesser of $3.5 million or the value by which the program exceeds the outstanding, outstanding principle of the bonds, and so that was $3.5 million this year. And so to date, the county has withdrawn almost $43 million, and even though the county has withdrawn that and to help with various programs, the value of the Millennium Fund continues to grow. So one of the goals I mentioned of the program is to achieve and maintain parity. The program achieved parity in 2003, meaning the value of the program exceeds the outstanding principle of the bonds, so if the county decided to close the program and pay off the bonds, it could do so, and as of April 1st, have almost $19 million left over of the program.
Question, Mr. Chair? How many years left on this program?
Of the outstanding...
Right.
Outstanding bonds?
It's actually in perpetuity, since the bonds are in a private placement, so...
Okay.
You need to pay down the bonds, and the goal, as we recall from the program, was to have that run in perpetuity in terms of an endowment.
Okay, and then compared to last year, do you remember what the unwind...
Yeah, it was slightly less, I have it here, one second. The unwind position last year was $14.8 million.
Pretty good, we took out two and a half and increased by four, not a bad deal, huh? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor.
So another goal of the program is to earn an investment return in excess of the borrowing costs, and that's measured since the inception of the program, so here are the results through April 1st, 2015. The return is higher by about, by 40 basis points, on par with last year. And it's been challenging recently as interest rates in that intermediate-term area start to move higher. As interest rates move higher, it negatively impacts the market value of the securities, and so it puts downward pressure on that. While the borrowing rate, we will see that move higher once interest rates move higher. Over the past year, the borrowing rate remained about the same as very short-term interest rates, one month and under, remained about where they were, really tied to the Fed Fund's target rate at 0%.
I just thought of something, the question that Mr. Cox asked, and maybe I misunderstood what he was asking, but I wanted to ask it if he wasn't. We issued these bonds, but the bonds were issued, were they 30-year bonds? I mean, the bonds are to be paid off at a certain point, right?
Right.
And when I look at that one, that one chart that you have on page six, where it shows the line descending on the bottom end, that represents the pay-down of the bonds, does it not?
Yeah, and each year, the county pays approximately $800,000 on the principal of the bonds, so yes, the county's paying down.
So when she talks about in perpetuity, what she meant was...
So the program...
Eventually, the bonds are paid off, and then we have this corpus, this block of funds, which the idea was to raise money from that in a different environment where we would have a reasonable rate of return to be able to fund the money that we now take out, even though the funds might cease to come from the tobacco industry.
Yeah, yes, thank you for the clarification, yeah, the bonds itself will be paid down, but the program will, it'll continue as long as the county would like it to. So here's just the issuer allocation of the Millennium Fund portfolio. This is as of September 30th, a little more updated information here. You can see a majority of the portfolio is invested in corporate notes or commercial paper, and the corporate notes are all floating-rate corporate notes. And these credit instruments benefit the portfolio through higher yields. Treasuries and agencies offer very, very low yields today. Corporates and commercial paper offer historically low yields, but more than you're getting from a treasury or an agency. And with the corporates, the floating rate... getting from a treasury or an agency. And with the corporates, the floating-rate component of the corporate really benefits the portfolio on a couple ways. One, because the borrowing rate is a floating-rate note, one-month LIBOR plus 25. If you can purchase a security that is at least one-month LIBOR plus 25, you can basically ensure that you're going to be earning more than the borrowing rate. And in addition, floating-rate corporate notes have very little interest rate risk. So, as interest rates move higher, the longer the security, the more negatively it's impacted by rising rates. Where floating-rate notes, because they reset, and so as interest rates move higher, the yield on, on the securities move higher, they really protect the portfolio from that rising interest rates. On page nine, just show an overview of the securities purchased during the year, the report year, April 1st, 2014 through April 1st, 2015. Again, you can see there the value we find in floating-rate corporate notes, as most of the purchases made in the last year were floating-rate corporate notes. You see the maturities are out to five years. However, the duration of all the purchases made in the last year are less than two years, again, to provide that market value protection. We've also added some federal agencies to the portfolio, non-floating-rate agencies, taking, taking, getting value from some of the interest rate increases we saw over the past year, so locking in higher yields as they reached the upper end of their trading ranges. Page 10 shows the maturity distribution of the portfolio as of September 30th. Again, securities out to five years in the portfolio, but all those beyond two years are floating-rate instruments or the agency mortgage-backed securities, so all which have shorter durations. So, finally, looking ahead, since the April 1st report date, interest rates have continued to trend slowly higher. The chart on the left there is the two-year Treasury yield from April 1st, 2015 to September 30th. And again, interest rates in that area of the yield curve are moving higher on anticipation of the Fed raising that Fed Funds' target rate. The chart on the right shows a probability of when the Fed will raise the Fed Funds' target rate. This is based on Fed Funds' futures, and actually, it may not match what's in your presentation. Does it not? Sorry about that. The, the chart on the screen is the estimate of when the Fed will raise the Fed Funds' target rate based on Fed Funds' futures, and the orange line would represent, the orange bar represents one rate hike. The Fed will raise interest rates one time. And so, you can see the probability that the Fed will do that in 2015 is about 35%, so the expectation that the Fed will raise interest rates this year. At, they have two more meetings left this year to do so. So, not a high chance. But if you look further into 2016, the probability of a Fed rate increase moves higher, almost to 100% by the end of the year. So, we do expect to see the Fed start to raise interest rates, which will raise the borrowing cost on the funds, but will also increase the interest rates available to the program. So, as far as strategy goes for the portfolio, it will really focus on protecting the market value of the portfolio in a rising rate environment. Floating-rate securities will continue to be a, a large element of the strategy. We likely will not purchase many securities that have maturity, final maturities, fixed-rate investments beyond two years because of that interest rate risk. And then we will continue to look for opportunities to actively manage the portfolio, to sell securities, to purchase, purchase other securities that will benefit the portfolio, especially as yields move higher, to capture the value of rising interest rates, with, of course, safety being the primary concern, safety of the principal, both realized and unrealized. That summarizes it. If there's any questions?
Questions?
No questions, just a quick comment if I can. I mean, this is a, before I came on the board, there was a lot of screaming and yelling and concern about this fund, and when I really looked into it, I thought, well, this looks like a pretty good deal. It looks like a good deal for the county. It looks like a good deal for the citizens. It looked like a good deal overall, and here we sit today with, you know, a fund worth a lot more than was ever put into it. We're pulling money out of it every year, and I'm thinking, this, this is like having your own coop of chickens. You don't have to take care of the coop. You don't have to take care of the chickens, but you get eggs every year. I mean, this is, this is a great deal. I'm, I'm really pleased with the way it's performed, really pleased with the way PFM has handled this program, so thank you very much. So, I think it's a great deal. It allows us flexibility to come up with funding. You know, we're using part of this fund as our match for the gels, so it's, it's been a great, great program. Thank you.
Thank Supervisor Rashida, because he helps to contribute to this fund's, you know, profitability. If we don't have smokers, we don't have revenue from the background of this.
I would say about a nickel.
Before you sit down, though, I, you know, I just was going to say, you made a comment I thought was very interesting, and it was from 2008 to 2015, there's been no change in the, virtually zero interest rate charged by the Federal Reserve.
Yes.
We have never been anything like this, ever, have we?
No, not for this prolonged period of, well, interest rates that low, and then also for this long of a time.
My reason for asking that, or making that comment, is that it has implications to our retirement board. You know, we have an assumed rate of return, which is based upon more average historical type of data, but here we have this extended period of time when the market has just changed considerably. And so, when you look at a 7.65% assumed rate of return in this marketplace, that, that seems extremely high. Now, historically, that would not have been high, because I can remember there were times when you could get eight, nine percent on a money market account, sitting in your bank account. That was a few years ago, under Carter administration, but...
I don't remember those days.
Yeah, I know, that was... But my, I guess my, my point is, I, I'm a little concerned about how long this is going to be extended, because, I mean, not for the Millennium Fund, but for the retirement system and for interest rates in general. And I have a theory, and I'm going to bounce this off of you. One of the reasons that there's so much pressure to keep interest rates down, in my mind, is that because of the huge federal debt that we have accumulated. And the minute you start bumping up interest rates and the federal government has to start paying those interest rates, what that might do to overwhelm our federal budget, because, what is it, $17 trillion or something like that now? Any, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, and that's definitely something, you know, you here talked about, that, right, the, the Federal Reserve itself will be negatively impacted when interest rates go up, because they'll have to pay higher interest on their bonds. How the government's set up, the Federal Reserve is independent of the government, so in, in theory, and, I mean, how it's set up, it should not, the Federal Reserve's decisions should not, that should not weigh into their decisions.
However.
But it is, I mean, it is a fact that will happen, and I mean, the Federal Reserve members know that will happen. So, I, I think it's definitely something that they do think about. It should not weigh into their decision in terms of how the, the Federal Reserve is set up. For their perspective, you know, what they're saying, it's more just ensuring that when they do start to raise interest rates, that it won't put the growth of the economy off track. That was the purpose of lowering it, was to help the economy grow after, you know, the credit and the housing crisis was to help the economy grow, and so they don't want to raise interest rates and throw that off course. And most recently, it's been global events that have kept the rate lower, at least these last several months, has been causing some concern to the Fed, because at home here, things are progressing fairly moderately, but steadily, and so it's some global concerns. So, that is the main reason for keeping it low, but I, I think they're also aware that it will, you know, increase the Federal Reserve's payments when they do, the U.S. Treasury's payments, I should say, when they do start to raise rates.
Great. And I just want to comment on something Supervisor Cox was saying, that that, you know, the county is in a pretty healthy position financially, but there have been many times in the past few years that but for the Millennium Fund, we would have had no money to do capital projects in this county. I mean, I'm talking about replacing carpets, replacing roofs, replacing, doing those kind of maintenance things that need to be done to maintain your properties. But for the Millennium Fund, we would have had nothing. And that was the purpose of the Millennium Fund, was really to provide these capital funds so that we could meet these obligations, because otherwise, there was no funding base to do that. And we have a lot of, a lot of properties that need tenure, love, and care, and, and some of them had fallen into disrepair. So, it has really served its purpose well, and it continues to do so, and the goal was to get to, I believe, $70 million as a, as a corpus, in other words, of, of money that would be fully paid for, and, and we would just have that money and then draw interest off of that to be able to continue to provide funding for our capital projects. Again, that was assuming a reasonable rate of return. These days, I wouldn't buy you very much, but we will hopefully see a return to more usual times in the not-too-distant future. Any other thoughts or questions by members?
Supervisor Rashida, you're leaning forward. Going back to what Supervisor Cox mentioned, I remember when Supervisor Cox and I were on the board, nearly elected to the board, we were followed around a lot by the people who were against the Millennium Fund. And it took, to their credit, it took the board's action to bring these reports annually in an open meeting to where the information was shared. And once we started sharing that information in an open meeting, the resistance to the Millennium Fund has evaporated. So, I think that's one, one thing we did right, was to, to bring the information public, and it's done very, very well. And I want to thank the supervisors that came before us for having the vision to establish this fund.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Lawrence, it's always a pleasure to have you here, and you guys have a safe journey back, back to San Francisco.
Thank you.
Now, move on to our consent calendar, and as I had mentioned earlier, we need to take item 22 off for separate action to make a modification to that. Are there any other items board members wish to handle separately?
If there's no items that the board members would like to handle separately, or members of the public would like to handle separately, I would move for approval of the consent calendar, less item 22.
Second to that. Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Innes. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Item 22 requires a little bit of a modification. Mike, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm recommending that you go forward and approve this item, with the exception that staff return and submit for the chair's approval a document memorializing the consent as between the CSD and the, and the county. Other than that, this is a good program. It's going to provide much-needed road improvements at a substantially reduced cost, so it's in the public interest. Thank you.
Questions? No questions. I'll move for approval. Motion by Supervisor Innes, second by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes. Again, the votes are unanimous. And we will now take up our timed items, so 9:30 public hearings. Item number five will come off. There will not be a public hearing on that because we have a signed agreement. And so, we will take up item number four, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider vacation of portions of Avenue 16, Avenue 17, and Avenue 20 northeast of Rich Grove. Morning, Jim, Ben.
Good morning, Chairman Wirthley, Supervisors, Mr. Spada and Ms. Bales Lang. Ben Ruiz, interim Assistant Director of Public Works. Before you today is a request for a public hearing for vacations of portions of Avenue 16, Avenue 17, and Avenue 20 in Tulare County. Just a brief outline of what I'll talk about today. I'll give a project overview, available to answer any questions, and then request for open the pub, to open the public hearing. The request came from Tulare Solar Reserve. It's, their project is for an 80-megawatt solar photovoltaic electrical generating facility. The energy produced from the solar farm will be sold to a public utility company, a municipality, or a California independent system operator to be ultimately sold or distributed for public consumption. Public build-out will occur over several years, with project phases consisting of multiple 10 or 20 megawatt phases. The project is located in southern Tulare County, south of the community of DuCor, northeast of the community of Rich Grove, and District 5. This is a site map of a, of a portion of the property that depicts, the yellow highlighted area depicts the boundary of the Tulare Solar property. The red lines here indicate the portions of the avenues that are requested to be vacated. This is an aerial view of the site. The purpose of this diagram is to show that these avenues exist, you know, on paper for Tulare County, but physically out in the field, they, they don't exist as far as actual roadways. Currently, the areas are being farmed. So, the request before you today is for vacation of portions of Avenue 16, 17, and Avenue 20. The request came from Tulare Solar Center, LLC. The vacations will allow for construction of a photovoltaic generating facility. The portion of Avenue 16 to be vacated is 50 feet in width, 1,650 feet in length. The portion of Avenue 17 to be vacated is 25 feet in width, 1,650 feet in length, and the portion of Avenue 20 to be vacated is 50 feet in width, 1,304 feet in length. As the aerial photographs show, the roads are non-maintained. They exist as field roads, but they're not actual roads, physical roads out on the site. No accesses will be affected by the vacation of these roadways, and the easements will be reserved for utilities. The vacations conform to Tulare County General Plan, per General Plan Review 15-002. These proceedings are undertaken pursuant to Streets and Highway Code Section 8300. A petition was filed pursuant to Section 8321 of the Streets and Highway Code. Public notice was published and posted in the field pursuant to Sections 8322 and 8323 of the Streets and Highway Code. And as I previously mentioned, general plan conformity as required by Section 8313 was verified, and this public hearing is pursuant to Section 8324 of the Streets and Highway Code. These are field photos of Avenue 416. In the foreground, you see the posting that was required by the Streets and Highway Code, and you can see that the existing alignment is currently being farmed. Same thing with Avenue 17. And then, here's another shot of Avenue...
So, how many people saw these notices, I wonder?
Probably not many. So, the next step is staff recommends approval of vacation of these portions of Avenue 16, 17, and 20, available to answer any questions, and then would request a public hearing.
Any questions, Supervisor?
Yeah, I've got a question. Ben, interim Public Works Director, what do you see, what's the total amount of these types of roads that we have in the county, where they are, basically, they're designated county roads?
Uh-huh.
That they are under farming or basically private ownership? Do we have a quantification of that?
I don't have a quantification myself off the top of my head right now, but it's something that we can definitely research and...
Yeah, I, I would like to know that, because I think this is, it's, it's an interesting point to know, and then also, maybe something we look at, doing something by right where we can take care of this whole backlog, so to speak, in the near future sometime.
Okay.
So, that, that would be one question. And the second thing I would ask is, when these properties change hands, if there's a, an, a property owner that wants to sell his farm or whatever piece of property, does he actually get credit for this ground that's under county road right-of-way to go along with this property? So, we're, we're taking care of a 1,650-foot-length by 50 feet in width piece of property. I, I would imagine that's going to amount to several acres.
Mm-hmm.
The, a property that's a zoned AE40 and, you know, you, let's say it's a 38-acre parcel.
Mm-hmm.
When you actually look at the road, subtract the road right-of-way that's included, is he going to be, is he able to sell that piece of property with all of that property? So, Robert is nodding his head. Okay. All right, well, Robert took care of the question for you, so he's, he's our county property guy, so he, he just took care of it, but I was just curious of that as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
One, just one quick thing if I can. You may have said it, but I didn't hear you say that this was dedicated in 1912. So, these have sat out there vacant for 103 years with no plan to use them, not in the foreseeable future, but even in the, the long-term future. So, I, I'm sure there's a lot of these out there that need to be cleaned up like this.
Yes.
And, Professor Supervisor Innes, the request by Supervisor Vanderpoel about how many acres, I, I, if you have that information and it's just a matter of going to and finding it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not trying to launch a year-long research project.
You may find that there is no inventory of it, and it would be a huge, I think, job to do this, because it's, we have them all over the county.
No, no, I, I understand, but I think it's important to know. No, no, I understand, but I think it's important to know because, you know, there's, there could be many of these situations coming down the road, and that onus is placed on the property owner, and I think it would be a good idea if we do have that actual knowledge.
All I'm just saying is that before you look and find out we don't have anything on this, and it's going to be a 50-hour project, we might come back and revisit how much detail we want on that. Supervisor Innes?
Well, I know this area very well.
Got jackrabbits out there?
Well.
I don't know jackrabbits.
This is the way, this is the way a lot of the Terabell area looked years ago. County road designations were there. Even the roads that people were using were dirt roads. And that's the way this piece of property is too. There's no paved roads back in there, so it's.
Okay. All right, we will have a public hearing on this matter now. Anyone wish to address the board on this matter, please come forward, give us your name and address. Our stampede insurance is all paid up. Okay, public hearing is closed. Bring you back to the board for action supervisor, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an observation, could we have an economic development perspective with regard to this project? It would be helpful to the board.
Mike Washington, Economic Development Planning, Assistant Director. Yeah, this solar project is actually the largest entitlement for one solar project, but it's going to be separated into multiple phasing. Currently, there's 34 megawatts into two projects being proposed and ready to move forward on this particular site. We also have other projects in the area. The Vestal projects are moving forward. Con Ed has purchased those. And so we have a lot of construction activity for the next 18 months going on in that general vicinity, all tying into the Vestal substation. These, these projects will generate significant sales tax revenue as they're subject to sales tax agreements that will put money into the board or the county's coffers. They're looking at approximately a quarter million dollars for every 20 megawatts that are built. That's approximately what we're, we've received in the past. And so we have all told, we have 115 megawatts that are moving forward right now, and then there's still going to be the remaining, of this project will be remaining. So there's significant revenue for sales tax, as well as our annual per-megawatt fee, which runs at $1,000 per megawatt.
Mike, I know that recently the governor, I don't know, resigned an executive order or did something about, talking about going from 30% renewables to 50% renewables. And I, I know there was a, we seemed to hit a point where we had given entitlements to, but construction was sort of lagging on projects. I'm just wondering now, I would think that information is going to push some of these projects forward that might have otherwise sort of set on the sidelines.
Absolutely. The Vestal projects, as I mentioned, Con Ed, Con Ed Development out of New York has purchased the vast majority of our utility scale. All of the ones down near Alpa, Allensworth, those are all, with the exception of the first one that was built, which is Samsung owns that, all the remaining ones down there that are built and ones currently under construction for another 20 megawatts are all owned by Con Ed, as well as the Vestal projects that were just purchased by Con Ed. They're going to build all four of those simultaneously, and it'll be going on at the same time that Tulare Solar Center projects are moving forward. So there is a significant push now. We, we have no entitled projects that are sitting idle at this point, where we did before. We have no, and we have no utility ones in the process either, through entitlement process. So we're currently proceeding on all of the ones that have been entitled. They're all currently active. They're all being pursued to construction. And to point up what Supervisor Innes had mentioned earlier about batteries and storage, that is something that we've gotten some inquiries about. Nothing's moved forward, but that is going to be another significant wave in this technology that they're going to be installing batteries at these locations and that will store the energy. It smoothes out the power to the grid, and that's something we're going to be looking forward in the future. We don't have any in-house yet, but we've had some inquiries about it.
Very good. Any questions, comments? All right, entertain a motion.
For approval.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Innes, second by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll take us into item number six, a public hearing, a request from Resource Management Agency to adopt, find, determine, declare, and resolve that a project is in conformance with the, with SEQA. This has to do with the acquisition of real property for the purpose of the Avenue 416 widening project. Ben, you're back up again.
Morning, Chairman. Ben Reese, Assistant, interim Assistant Public Works Director. The item before you today is a resolution of necessity hearing as part of the Avenue 416 road widening project. Brief outline, brief outline of what I'll talk about today. I'll go over the description of the project, the purpose of the project, also have some slides regarding the findings that the board must make for this resolution of necessity, which are conformance with SEQA, public interest and necessity, greatest public good, least private injury, and then the government code, Section 7267.2, offer, and then authorizing county council to file legal action. Then, of course, any questions in the public hearing. So the project, the overall project consists of an approximately 12-mile-long segment of the Avenue 416 corridor that will be widened from two lanes to four lanes. The project starts within Fresno County near State Route 99 and will end just east of Dinuba at Road 92. The project that the county is responsible for the design and construction of is approximately a three-mile-long segment, starting at the Fresno County line and ending on the east end at Road 56, just west of the city of Dinuba. The project, like I mentioned, will widen the existing Avenue 416 corridor from two lanes to four lanes with a 22-foot-wide median separating the two directions of traffic. Current right-of-way varies between 60 and 80 feet. The proposed right-of-way will be between 110 feet and 165 feet to accommodate drainage. The purposes of the project are to relieve congestion, improve traffic flow, also to be consistent with planned and local development, and to improve safety and operation of Avenue 416, and the subsequent slides cover each of these topics. With regards to environmental clearance, on October 21, 2008, the Board of Supervisors approved a final environmental impact report pursuant to SEQA. On April 28, 2009, California Department of Transportation approved the final environmental impact, environmental assessment pursuant to NEPA, and there's no new information or modifications to the project that would require further environmental review. With regards to public interest and necessity, like I mentioned before, the purpose of the project is to relieve congestion. This table here is from the environmental impact report, and it quantifies the average daily traffic from 2001, from a study performed in 2001. And it also quantifies the level of service of the existing roadway. Level of service, A being the best level of service, in other words, very little congestion, free-flow traffic. Level of service F is worst level of service, high congestion, basically gridlock. From the 2001 study, the level of service along the corridor ranges from a C to a D, but in year 2030, with projected increases in traffic level, the level of service would be at unacceptable levels between D and E, and also F. So with the project, this next table, also taken from the environmental impact report, indicates that the level of service with the project, with the roadway widening, would be between a level of service A and B, so that's an acceptable level of service. With regards to consistency with planned and local development, Avenue 416 is a major roadway. It's an east-west corridor between State Route 99 and the city of Dinuba. In the area, there's food processing plants, produce packing houses, container manufacturing plants, and distribution centers. With these types of business, in addition to large volumes of traffic, there's also a large portion of truck traffic. And also, the project is needed to accommodate the development and also projected growth based on the city of Dinuba's general plan. With regards to improving safety and operations of Avenue 416, the added travel lanes will reduce congestion. Like I mentioned previously, the level of service in 2030 with the project would be between an A and a B. The two travel lanes in each direction allow vehicles operating at different speeds to pass each other without merging onto opposing lanes of traffic. Dedicated left-turn lanes will be provided at major intersections, and then traffic signals will also be installed where warranted by traffic studies. The median also provides a distance between opposing directions of traffic, and throughout the corridor will provide a clear recovery area of 20 feet, so a buffer area of 20 feet from the edge of where the edeline stripe is to any rigid objects. With regard to the greatest public good and the least private injury, basically, there was three alternatives considered for the project. One alternative was a no-build alternative, and the other two alternatives basically varied between widening to the north or widening to the south. So it was, the difference between the alternatives was in the form of the alignment. Alternative one was selected by the Board of Supervisors as the environmentally superior alternative, as well as the preferred alternative. And the major difference between alternative one and alternative two was that it avoided impacts to the Maya Theater in the city of Dinuba, as well as to two church congregations. Within the rural sections of the corridor, there was minor differences in terms of impact between the two alternatives, but the main thing that was looked at in the rural sections was impacts, minimizing impacts to residential structures. This diagram shows the approximately three-mile segment that the county is responsible for the design and construction of. What this is intended to show is, so the boxes indicate, the green box indicates a home, the blue box indicates a business, generally structures. And so for the most of the segment, the widening is to the north of the existing alignment. As you get to Road 48, the alignment will shift to the south, and then at Road 52, it shifts back to the north. And by doing so, it avoids impacts to the Windsor School, which is eligible as a historic structure. And by going to the south, while there is an impact to one structure here, it avoid impact, it avoids impact to a structure here located at the northeast corner of Road 48 and Avenue 416. So before I get into the specific property, if there's any questions regarding the project or the alignment. So I'll have to commend our property management staff, Robert Newby and Heather Franklin. We've had, we had 20 different parcels for this project that we had acquired, and 16 different property owners. And we're down basically to this one here, located on the northwest corner of Road 52 and Avenue 416. The affected property is APN 012-160-030, and it's, the property owners are Jeffrey and Laura Workington. The right-of-way requirements on the property vary from 3.06 feet to 54 feet along Avenue 416, and from 36.89 feet to the existing right-of-way along Road 52. The right-of-way length is approximately 984 feet along Avenue 416 and 121.24 feet along Road 52. In addition to the right-of-way acquisition, there's also a need for a 15-foot temporary construction easement adjacent to the right-of-way along Avenue 416. This slide shows the right-of-way requirements. They're basically the, let's see here, the area in red is what's proposed to be acquired for the property. This area here in like purple or pinkish is actually a current roadway easement, but we'll be acquiring the area in fee title for the project. And then the green area here is a temporary construction easement, 15-foot wide, to accommodate construction equipment and activities during construction. So government code, Section 7267.2A. The offer was made on February 2, 2015, an offer of not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. Notice of this hearing of resolution was sent to Jeffrey Workington and Laura Workington on October 5, 2015, pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1245.235. So staff's recommendation is to conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution of necessity, and based on the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt a resolution of necessity, making the following findings. So finding A, that the project is in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Finding B, the public interest and necessity require the project. Finding C, the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Finding D, the property described in the attached appendix A, made a part hereof, is necessary for the project. Finding E, the offer required by Section 7267.2A of the government code, together with the accompanying statement of, statement of, and summary of the basis for the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with the requirements of government code, Section 7267.2A. And finding B, county council is authorized to file legal action against the property With that, if there's any questions?
And I know this is, this resolution of necessity, you have given us all the bare bones of it, but just for public information, after we go through this process, if it successfully is completed, it leaves open the issue of whether the amount that we tender to them is going to be the ultimate outcome in terms of compensation for their property. It leads it to a court system to actually decide what that amount would be if it goes to its ultimate direction. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other thing is that we don't, in this document, talk about mitigation measures and so forth in terms of how it might affect their particular property. But I know that in, on the Road 80 project, where we had similar situations where our road came closer to the front of people's homes, I remember we did some rubberized asphalt on the, on the road that actually reduced the noise level to a lower level than it had been prior to the expansion of the road, so it made quite a difference. But that's not part of the issue here today, but those are things that would be negotiated or worked out, I assume, at a later date.
Yes, and I'll say that the negotiations with the property are ongoing, so hopefully we can come to an agreement soon.
Any questions by board members? Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address us on this matter is welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Chairman, make the motion to approve staff recommendation, make all the findings.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take to our untimed items. Item number 24 is a request from the county administrative office to approve the joint powers agreement between Fresno Kings, Madera, Merced, and Tulare Counties creating the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority. If I might speak to this matter, we're still trying to work out the details, and I'm going to meet with council today or early next week. There are still a couple of items that have to be resolved. Fresno County has been sort of crafting the document. There seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between what the supervisors that met in an ad hoc committee, individual members from different counties agreed to, and what the final document looks like today. We're hoping that we will still come to resolution here, and we're going to, and I'm going to request this matter be continued for one week, and we will hopefully have that matter resolved in the next seven days. Any questions?
It will be continued for one week.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Innes, second by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, let's take to item 25. This is a request from Resource Management Agency to receive an update regarding the status of flood control action plan for 2015-16, and directs. an update regarding the status of flood control action plan for 2015, 16, and direct staff to take appropriate action.
I'm back.
Busy guy today.
Yes. Ben Ries, Interim Assistant Director of Public Works. We've been, the last couple of months, preparing a flood control action plan in preparation for the upcoming rainy season, especially since there's predictions for maybe an above-average rainy season, so the request before you today is to present this flood control action plan and request, you know, us to implement it. So what we'll talk about today, analysis, the analysis that we've performed in-house, the activities, we've performed some activities already, such as inspections of some of our culverts and, and bridge structures, and then what our plans are to move forward with our response plan and coordination with other agencies as well, some internal and some external, and then we'll go over the review of our next steps. So now I'll turn it over to our chief engineer, Reid Schenke, he's been the man in charge as far as preparing this flood control action plan, and he'll go through the presentation for you.
All right, the man in charge, I like that.
Thank you, Ben. Reid Schenke with the Resource Management Agency, and I guess I'd have to initially kind of confess to having a bit of a split personality for the last few months. I feel like I spend half my time looking for water because of the drought, and the other half of the time worrying about what we're gonna do if we get too much water because of El Nino. So like Ben mentioned, we've gone through some analysis, and we've undertaken some of the activities, and we're continuing to proceed with those activities. We've developed some plans, and then we want to provide you with an opportunity to give us some feedback if you have any particular concerns or areas that you'd like us to take a look at or focus on in a little more detail. So the weather forecast, most current from NOAA or from the National Weather Service, it's a little bit noncommittal, but they're saying a 50% chance of above-average rainfall, and to them, anything over average is considered above average, so that could be one inch more than normal, or it could be 20 inches over normal. They're not really sure there. You can see on the map of the nation that the impacts from El Nino more predominantly affect the southern portion of the country. We're kind of right in that dark green to middle green section there, and that's, if you can't read it, it's 50%, so as you move further north, it's a lower chance of precipitation, so just because we hear El Nino doesn't necessarily mean it's going to rain more. It's not a guarantee. Our, our primary concern for flooding, though, is more the intensity of the storms and the timing of the storms. If we get more rain than normal and it's spread out over the season, it's not necessarily as big a problem. If they all come within two weeks or so, then we've got some particular concerns. Moving into what we've been looking at is, we've coordinated with our county staff, both the, the folks out in the field who are familiar with fighting floods, with responding historically, and then also looking through, because we haven't had rain for the past three, four years of any substantial measure, been looking for situations on the field that have changed that may cause potential flooding situations as we go forward. This process, we're calling the hotspot risk assessment, it's a risk analysis, and we've taken that information and established a GIS map. There's a lot of institutional memory with floods and conditions that have occurred, but up to this point, we really haven't developed a kind of a controlling document or a resource to utilize as we go forward. You can see here, there's some hotspots. This is more or less the northern portion of the county, but we have done it for the entire county, and so we're creating this GIS database that will allow us not only this year, but as we go forward into the future, to understand better where these potential flooding situations may occur. Not only did we coordinate that with county staff, but we've kind of gone the extra step of coordinating with all the various irrigation districts and call them water experts throughout the county. These are the folks who are moving water through the channels, either their own channels or sometimes the, the natural waterways. But we've met with folks from the North County, from the South County, you can see the list here, and we've had quite a good response from them. They've been very appreciative that we're undertaking this process and that we're opening those lines of communication with them. Like I say, we've used the, their information to supplement that hotspot assessment. We've coordinated some response. They've admitted to us that they are, in the past, they've taken on flood fighting responsibilities, and that they're willing to help us with equipment needs or kind of a mutual aid assistance there as well. Maintenance activities of the channels is a big concern, and so we've coordinated with these folks who do maintain some of these channels to understand where we need to focus. So that's been quite a helpful opportunity there, too. And we've established emergency contacts. We had our people who were on the field, the road crews and the superintendents from the road yards, meet with their folks on the field so that at 2:00 AM, when the water's coming, they've got each other's cell phones, they're established, that coordination, and that communication line is there. So we think that'll be a very useful opportunity for us if and when there's any issues.
Question, Cox?
I ask a quick question. I, I see all the, the hotspots here, and I see the city of Porterville being the only city on your list. I'm just going to assume that you're communicating with all of the cities as well because there's, all of our cities have areas that flood in addition to this, so I'm just gonna assume that even though they're not on this list, you're including all of the cities and their public works departments in that loop?
Definitely. We've met with the city of Porterville, and we've, we've reached out with Tulare and the city of Visalia as well.
Thank you.
So the result of that hotspot assessment is, here's kind of the big picture. Let's go look at some of the particular concerns, and I'm not gonna show them all to you, obviously, that'd take all day, but picked out a couple. One is the, the White River here, south part of the county, east of Early Mart in particular. The issue that came up there was, there's a substantial amount of debris, both natural and man-made, that have been placed either on the banks of the rivers, or as you can see from this photo, within the river channel itself there. I believe that these are grape stakes that have been put there either by the property owner, or in a lot of cases, just dumped by people who are taking opportunity of the, the area. Part of the, the action that we've taken to remedy these situations is we've sent out letters to property owners informing them of their, somewhat their responsibility to clear and maintain these channels. The channels are on private property, and our concern would be in an event like this where the water would come through, wash those, that debris up against a bridge or a culvert, and then create a backflow situation where it expands beyond the, the levees or the banks of the river.
I have a question for you. You brought the point up that, that is well understood, that this, these are, these are known waterways, but they exist on private property. What is the county's authority to enter into these properties to take action if that's, if that's needed?
There, there's three, in my mind, three main hurdles to going in and taking action within these. First, and maybe the simplest, would be just permission to enter with, on the properties, get a written op, permission to enter there. The second is a, a bit more challenging, and that's a stream bed alteration or maintenance agreements with Fish and Wildlife. Currently, well, actually, so there's, there's two parts to that. The first part is we've been negotiating with Fish and Wildlife to go in and use equipment, basically in my mind, it's boots and shovels. It's man, men, resources walking in and clearing non-native debris, trash, mattresses, that sort of thing, and downed and dead debris. Today, your board approved the stream bed alteration agreement with Fish and Wildlife that'll allow us to go into areas in proximity to bridges and culverts of the county roadways with a little bit heavier equipment and do some more advanced levels of cleaning. Our next step there would be to take that back to Fish and Wildlife, have them execute that agreement, and that opens up a, a better opportunity for us to get in with a little bit more activities. We plan to take that, that's a long-term agreement, I believe it's a five-year agreement with opportunities for extension. We're hoping to, soon hereafter that's executed, go back and amend it to have it include, if not all of the streams or creek beds, but a substantial portion. Like I say, we're limited to right within the, the roadways at that point.
And Mr. Chairman, to add on to the answer, your question, I assume, was directed to preventative or proactive measures. In the event that there is a flood, your board has the authority to take whatever action is necessary to protect the public health and safety. That may possibly require compensation to landowners after the emergency is over, but if you can't deal with it proactively, you're going to be able to deal with it in an urgent manner.
And we have, in previous experiences, done that.
I had a conversation with Fish and Wildlife Services yesterday. Fish and Wildlife Services has put an emergency program in place to where you don't have to go through the whole permitting process to clear channels, and those final guidelines will be coming out within the next week or two weeks, and I've got most of your information on my, they emailed to me, and I'll forward to your department. But we're gonna have a Fish and Wildlife person there explaining this emergency program at our Three Rivers Town Hall meeting on Monday at 7 o'clock at the Veterans Memorial Building, but apparently the state is being proactive because of this El Nino threat, or El Menudo threat.
Yeah.
So we're, they're cutting a lot of the red tape. In fact, from what I can gather, some of the work can be done without a permit, and the permit applied for after the work is done.
They do have an emergency notification procedure, and the definition of emergency is a little bit fuzzy in my mind at this point. If, you know, we go out now and identify a need such as this example here, is that an emergency, or do we have to wait for the water to actually be flowing through?
Well, I think we halfway clear that up Monday night.
That'll be good.
I got, I got a question.
Yes, it was.
How much money is Fish and Wildlife gonna put in the game to clean up the streams? Are they gonna put some money in?
Absolutely done.
One penny.
They typically charge us to go in there and do that, actually.
You're not paying a permit fee.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, item 21 on your agenda today, which you approved, is the stream bed alteration agreement, so RMA staff, in particular, Public Works, has been proactive in the sense that we got the agreement in place now.
Another item or area of concern that was identified during that risk assessment was our Sand Creek through the communities of Cutler and Rosy. The main concern there is the proximity of the, the channel to properties. We did a, a walking inspection of the entire channel there. We identified some growth that is somewhat of a concern. There were some dead and down trees that we're in the process of removing, and there were some transients that had stored mattresses and tires and whatnot under bridges, so we're working through a process of clearing that out. Here you can see a photo of the trees in the channel, and we're taking those out. An item like that would potentially catch a lot of other debris and clog in a way that you can see the...
If I might just speak to the matter on Sand Creek, which is up in my district, the county, a number of years ago, after the big flood of 6970, in the days before CEQA and NEPA, environmental concerns, built a dam up there. I think it just went up and built it, and it is a open culvert dam so that water backs it behind it if it cannot be handled, if the culvert cannot handle the volume of water, and to date, it has never overtopped the dam. And as long as we have this channel cleared, then the channel can, has been able to accommodate the flow through that culvert. So this is a very significant, and we've, we've had flood issues since then, and it's been because of this very thing, where the channel was, was filled in with debris or whatever, and...
Tenants.
I think the tenants got out of the way, but stuff may have not had. But anyway, the idea was that we've had flooding problems since then, but it's only been because we haven't had the channel cleared, so this is, this is, again, unless we have the kind of event which would overtop the dam, God help us if that happens, this is, this will be a very effective tool to handle up in that part of the county. Thank you.
So you mentioned the, the tenants under the bridge there. We do have a process for evicting the, the residents there. We post notices, give them about two weeks to vacate, and then if they leave their materials, we store that onsite for about 60 days in case they want to claim that stuff, so that at the road yards, or at the, from the nearby pit. And I mentioned some of the, earlier, some of the challenges. It's two, clearing the channels, permitting being one, private property, and then the resources to go in and do that. We're currently trying to work in an agreement or arrangement with Proteus. They have some additional drought-related work helpers that we can go in, and they can provide some manpower to help do some of the, the basic labor with, with that process. We've done a thorough inspection of the various bridges that are typically flooding concern, and like I say, prior to getting this stream bed alteration agreement in place, we've gone in with boots and shovels to remove the trash and debris, so here's a few before and after pictures. Some of them aren't too bad. The tires typically would wash through with kind of the first flush, but as it, you end up further and further downstream, that kind of aggregates, and we wanted to pick that up and clean that up as much as possible. Before and after pictures here. Moving into our constructed facilities, we do a proactive basin maintenance program where we go throughout the county to all of the stormwater or flood control basins, and with a joint program with the juvenile workforce program through probation, they go in and clear those out. We've got them all mapped and identified, something which is probably only happened within the last year or so. There were cases where these basins were a little bit unknown, so now we know exactly where they are. We inspect them manually, and we do maintain them with weed clearing, like you can see in the photos here. The other constructed facility is the, the pump maintenance, so we have a number of flood control pumps. These typically collect road drainage and then discharge into channels or waterways. So you've got a GIS map, this is just a section, there's quite a few in that Sand Creek area through Rosy and Cutler there. So we've inspected all of those flood control pumps. There's currently, today, I believe, one in Seville that's one of the remaining pumps that's out of commission, and we're restoring that with one of our contractors, and then the final is this photo here you see. It's in East Porterville, or sorry, it's in West Porterville, but it's on the same site there, you're familiar probably with the East Porterville well going in right on the Tulie River there, off of Olive Avenue. And as soon as the drill rig for that well project is off-site, which I believe will be this week, we'll go in and do the final construction to restore the power to this facility here, so that'll be our last flood control pump that's out. As far as response goes, we've, we're preparing with equipment and resource preparation, and probably one of the most effective and simplest tools to respond to flooding is sandbags. It's not a new technology, and it's a labor-intensive technology, but it's been pretty effective in the past, so. We make, through coordination with Office of Emergency Services, Fire, RMA, and then purchasing, we make bags available to the public. They, we call those the self-fill bags, and they're available at the locations you see here. Big pile of sand and a bunch of burlap sacks, and as needed, they can go in and shovel and fill those bags. For county use, we've got pre-filled bags staged in the various locations, a large number of them supplied here at the Sequoia County area.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna have a question.
Please, Ben, pull.
If Ashida wants to go first, he can, he was leaning in.
On your sandbags locations, Strathmore is more prone to flooding than Lindsay, and in the past, we've had sandbag availability in Strathmore. That's where we run the water down through...
Comes up over the Frank canal there, and then goes down, yep. We'll look into seeing what we can do to establish some sandbags at that location there, too.
Mr. Chair, I should have spoken before Ashida, because Early Mart's more important than Strathmore, but I was gonna, I was gonna say that the community of Early Mart has definitely experienced flooding in the past, especially with our proximity to White River, so I'd like to see the fire station kind of being at a central point there in the community, and I'm sure the memorial building would also be willing to accommodate in, in some of their back areas on their property as well.
The, the South County was one of the areas that we kind of identified as being a little bit of a need, and Early Mart could possibly cover the Allensworth, Alpoa community.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Beyond sandbags, we do have at each of our road yards, a pump similar to what you see on top there, the trailer-mounted, five or six-inch trash pump.
They look like that?
Uh, not quite as big. We have some that I believe are 1950 surplus Army, but there are a, a number of new pumps as well, so within the past two, three years, we've purchased some, some new pumps, so we do have a, a supply of pumps, and we've got arrangements with Quinn Rental to supply any additional that we may need if we need to rent additional.
And you know, you made the comment earlier, and that is, and I'm really happy to see that, but this pre, this, this sort of pre-planning idea of working with irrigation districts and cities, because all of them have also equipment like this, and in many cases, we're gonna be dealing with the same issues on, whether it's irrigation canals or street flooding or whatever, because they all sort of fall together. I'm sure that that will help us to include, increase our inventory of available equipment.
Mr. Chair, that also kind of brought to mind another subject that I think could be a real opportunity for us to utilize in the case of an emergency or any kind of flooding event, and that is private property owners. I'm familiar with several farmers who have farms that are adjacent to... I'm familiar with several farmers who have farms that are adjacent to White River or some of these other channels throughout the county. And as they see flooding, they have the loaders, they have the equipment onsite that they use for their ag operations already. And with permission, maybe beforehand from not only the county, but using the county to get to Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife as well, we might have some real opportunity there to partner with equipment that's already there, save us some rental costs and some logistical issues and get some of the work done prior to the water actually coming. So I would definitely encourage you to reach out to some of the private property owners as well in strategic locations.
Supervisor Cox.
Real quick, it's been a while ago, but we had some flooding in the city of Visalia, no flooding anywhere else in the county. There were pumps, you know, that didn't work, that were supposed to work and move storm water. And there was an issue, you know, there were pumps in our road yard and there was an issue with sending people out to get those, bringing them into Visalia. It seemed like we did not bring our pumps in to help because their pumps were overworked. I'm wanting to know if we have those mutual aid agreements worked out, like our firepeople, our firefighters, our police departments, sheriff, they have mutual aid agreements to where a drop of a dime, that shows how old I am, a drop of a dime, and they show up to help. And in this instance, I was actually standing in the room when I heard, you know, the county's not going to send the pumps because they may need them somewhere in the county if it starts flooding later. So I just want to make sure we have those issues ironed out to where if we get a call for mutual aid from a city or even a neighboring agency, that we're there to help.
Certainly. We, I don't, to my knowledge, believe we have any formal agreements in place, but from my individual perspective, if there's a need, then we would be able to assist. And then back to the, the issue about private property owners as well. I think through our discussions with the irrigation districts, they have a lot of those connections with the property owners. And we've already got good responses from them that, you know, they're aware of the situations and some of these property owners have said, you know, we'll, we'll be available to help, too.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Getting into particular locations or items that we've, actions that we've taken up to this point for protection of flood control concerns. One of the biggest ones is, or the biggest concerns to the county in particular, is this Juvenile Justice Center north of Bob Wiley, Sequoia Field area. Cottonwood Creek has in the past breached the levees there, or the berms there, as the levees. And come very close to the, the structures there at the Juvenile Justice Center. What we've done is created a three to six-foot tall berm along that south bank of the Cottonwood Creek and then also around the sandpit to the east to protect that, the, the facilities there. Longer-term project in blue you can see is the ultimate realignment of Cottonwood Creek, much further to the north, kind of restoring it to its natural waterway. But that main red line running east-west there is going to be our, our main embattlement against any potential breach of the, the Cottonwood Creek there. And here's a picture of that. That's constructed. Want to make myself available. If anybody would like to go out and kind of look around this facility, then we can do a tour of that. I'd be happy to set something up like that where we can show you exactly what the, the flow of water would be expected to...
I think I certainly would be interested in that. Maybe somebody in the board would want to join us.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Williams.
I thought we were looking at utilizing these sand pits as recharge basins when we had a flood.
So there's...
Take floodwaters during peak flows and, and put them into the sand pits and then once subsided, let it move on.
Definitely. In, there's a number of unused sand pits throughout the county for the road yards where they've pretty much exhausted the supply of sand there. And that's an opportunity. We're both working with CAO's office and a couple of the irrigation districts to look at those parcels there. This sandpit here is actively being used and so we wanted to protect it as much as possible. By building this berm around it, we did build into it kind of a, a relief structure, a release structure on that northeast corner so that if the, the further downstream facilities are being potentially affected, then we can basically knock a hole in the levee real quickly. We've got some K-rail set in there and the water with that sandpit kind of is an emergency release valve.
I want to follow up on the agreement we made with the sheriff for the acting CAO. You were there, weren't you?
Yeah, yes, the agreement will be faithfully executed.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's our Cottonwood Creek at the Juvenile Justice Center berm. We have been designing and we've completed the design of the, the ultimate Cottonwood Creek relocation project there. So that one, funding, pending funding would be available to go forward in construction, most likely starting in the spring when the wet weather's come forward. This was a project that was identified as the priority through the Flood Control Commission. The estimate for that is about one and a half million dollars. And there's been some discussion on whether or not to fund that with flood control money or to go forward and look for additional funding sources, grants, that sort of thing. Up to this point, we haven't identified any specific grants that would be applicable to that project. The Flood Control Commission requested I bring this back to you at some point to see whether or not we would like to go forward with funding that using flood control budget.
I thought we had given direction to that because originally when it was brought to us, the idea was that we have always, up until for a number of years, all of our flood control dollars have gone towards expansion of the major dams on the Tulley and the Quea and that we have not done any other projects in the, in the county at all for a number of years and that I thought RMA brought these three projects, the, the Sontag ditch, the Cottonwood Creek, I'm sorry, the, the Seville-Sontag ditch was, there was two small projects there. And then there was the realignment of the Cottonwood Creek. And we recognized that we did not have the funding to do all the Cottonwood Creek one because that was a much more expensive one. And we are on the, we're on the line, we're in the, the queue with the Upper Kings River Erwimp as a project that has not yet been funded, that maybe it will in the future. But I thought we were gonna go forward with the Seville projects.
We are.
That's not contingent upon seeking funding. That's actually gonna go forward. And is that going forward this fall or when is it?
That, we're currently working, I've got that on the next slide here, I believe. Oh, no, I didn't. We're currently working to gain the easements with the property owners to get that and we're expecting that to be done in the next probably two months or so and then we'll go forward with the construction of that. That's a dual pipeline that kind of relieves some of the, the added flow from the Sontag ditch and then discharges it into the Stone Corral.
And what happens on the Sontag ditch is that the feral streams that are on the foothills there, there are no streams there until floods and all of a sudden they become raging streams and they find their way into the irrigation canals, Sontag being the furthest one to the east there. It gets intercepted and then it becomes a flood channel.
Overwhelms the facility there.
Hopefully you'll be able to do this before El Nino decides to unleash. Okay.
Yes, we're aggressively working with the property owners to get that in place and the design is completed and done and construction shouldn't take too long. It's just a matter of really getting it out to bid. And you mentioned the, the three projects. The Yedam Button Ditch is the third of those three there. And we're just now beginning the design of that Button Ditch project. So that would be, it's somewhat similar in scope to the Seville-Sontag ditch. So it's a lower-cost project and we can definitely use a flood control budget. Go ahead and complete that. The remaining projects there were identified by the Flood Control Commission in that priority there that you see. So as we move through the projects, we'll be working our way down the list. Moving into kind of the desktop and paper side of the world, readiness and response plans. We've got a written response protocol. This one was developed specifically for our road, our RMA operations crews to go out and respond to the smaller level floods. As things become a little bit more increased, as the nature of the situation becomes a bit more emergent, we will include the Office of Emergency Services, Fire, and get involved with countywide OES plan for the, the ICS and Emergency Management System plans. We're working on developing a notification protocol. This will be mainly, I think, at this point email, but we're also exploring potentially a, a website or a kind of a blog, a limited access blog to allow yourselves, Fire, the, the responders to know the situations as we identify them and, and get responses back from the people in the field. So that would be a, a notification protocol that we're working on developing. As I mentioned, we're coordinating with a number of agencies, both in the county and outside. Some of the, the main ones here are identified. But I think new to the, the discussion that we've included this year is incorporating the flood control districts, the irrigation districts. And then we've been dealing with the state and federal agencies. They, hopefully things don't get to the point where they become involved, but if it does, then we're prepared, prepared to activate their, their resources and their, make themselves available. And also as far as reimbursement for funding, if we do have emergency response required, then FEMA makes reimbursement available to that. So we're prepared to work with them. The next steps, we'll continue to monitor the weather patterns. We maintain those communication lines that we've got with the, the responders and with the water conveyors. We're continuing to work with property owners. We've been sending out, like I mentioned, letters to notify them or request them some actions as far as cleanup of the channels goes. We're continuing our inspections and maintenance, the, mainly the channel clearing efforts through our roads crews there. And then we'll also, in the next few weeks, perform or do some inter-agency trainings with the OES, Fire, and the Sheriff. So we'll do some actual training opportunities, call it tabletop. I can't remember the term that they were using, but it's a tabletop where we run through the scenario of an actual flood situation. With that, our request is just to receive the report, direct staff to take any appropriate actions that you may see need for. And then if you have any specific questions, again, I'm available to, to answer that.
Well, I want to say first and foremost, thank you to RMA for doing this. In my seventeen years on the board, we have never, to my knowledge, ever taken this kind of a proactive approach. Now, I will say, part of that is the change of our knowledge of weather and climatology. So we have all this, I think in nineteen sixty-nine seventy, when, when we had a major flooding time in Tulare County, that was the first time I think anybody ever heard of El Nino, even though it was a, it was a known kind of a phenomenon that occurred. It was the very first time for most people, I think, I ever, they ever heard that term being used. Today, we have more sophisticated computer modelings and so forth and so we are anticipating that this could be a major wet year and hoping it's gonna be a major wet year. But I will say this, even if we don't have a flooding event, the activities that you're doing today are critical because there will be a flood. As Supervisor Sheed has said, every drought ends with a flood. And if it doesn't occur this year, it will occur and the actions that are being taken today from a planning standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, from clearing channels and so forth, is well worth the effort. And we hope it's needed this year because we need the water. But it's needed. If not this year, it will be needed. And so I really appreciate the fact that I think, because so far, in the past, our focus has really been on, again, the major projects of upgrading the spillways on the Quea and the Tulley, we really ignored our other flood control responsibilities. At least that's been the case for the last twenty years, I think. And, and so we did it after the fact. We'd have a flood, we would have damage, and then we would seek, we would get funding from FEMA and so forth to go back and fix things and, and, and repair things. And now we're doing something proactively, and that's not to say that we won't have problems, because if we have the kind of flooding which is possible, it doesn't matter what you do, you're gonna have a lot of impacts. But we are certainly minimizing those impacts. And if it's just, you know, like you said, if the, if the rain is spread out over time, the things that we're doing today and, and plan to do between now and the next couple of months could mean no flooding whatsoever versus some minor flooding. And if we have a major flood, it's going to help to move water through our area without creating, you know, serious issues. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is a really, really good news for us as a county and I, I know I'm very appreciative and I'm... Yes, Mike?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, very briefly. First, I want to thank Ben and Reed for leading a very good team, integrated team with both planning, fiscal, and other agencies. Your outreach is really appreciated and as suggested by the board, please continue to do that outreach, particularly with regard to cities, property owners and irrigation districts, because the more information is provided by the county, the better I think our response efforts will be. I also want to compliment you for really working closely with Fish and Wildlife and Fish and Game in order to get those channels cleared. That was very difficult without an agreement and so on a very informal basis, they were able to go in, get in, get out, and it was very well done. So let me just thank you for an excellent effort and we look forward to hopefully addressing this very effectively. Thank you.
And before, just before we take action on this, I thought, we've been adding, as we've gone along, people have interjected what they thought were issues. And, and so before we take a motion, I think I'd like to ask the members if they have any other areas or concerns that have not been addressed in the report. Supervisor Van Pult.
Yeah, I, I kind of brought it up already with Early Mart, but that would also include Allensworth and Alpa, which usually would access the majority of their services through Early Mart anyways, just in terms of travel. So that would be great if they would be considered. I was just gonna compliment you on the presentation. I think that's a, a really great that we're making sure that we're ready for what is to come, if it does come at all. And I was also kind of curious to, it almost looks like this gal doesn't make it across the street. So did she enough falling in the water or did she make it? I'm kidding. But no, keep up the great work and if you do have any issues where we can maybe assist in terms of collaboration with property owners, please don't hesitate to ask. I know I, I will offer that and I'm sure any of us with our contacts would be willing to help as well. So keep up the great work and don't hesitate to ask for assistance in the future.
Box.
Yeah, it was my understanding, like I think Supervisor Worthy, that we've given direction, especially in the relocating the ditch there above Juvenile Hall. I thought that was in a way, thought we were, CEQA was moving, going forward, done. I thought we'd even had an agreement with Fish and Game, got their approval to...
That's correct.
So if it's just a funding matter, I know how much money's sitting in the flood control kitty and I'd rather do that sooner rather than later.
Supervisor, uh, Sheed.
Sheed.
Ashida.
Ishida.
Okay. I also like to say thank you to RMA for being proactive. The question I have is something that Supervisor Worthy brought up, is a couple of these projects we talked about years ago that we gave approval to move forward on. And I'm glad we're catching up that we, we need to go forward on these projects. The other question I have is, how many new pumps did we buy?
Within the past three years, I believe we've bought three new pumps for the, these are the larger trailer-mounted pumps.
But the larger pumps?
Yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of those pumps, I really think they were, they were made before I was born.
There's some Army surplus, yes.
They didn't even have that technology then, Allen, so it had to be...
There's a windmill attached to the top.
So I, I think with us buying new, new, new pumps and actually being able to coordinate with our neighbors, we should be in relatively good shape. Thank you.
Supervisor Jones.
Yeah, thanks, thanks also for the report. I appreciate the update. Something that I see when I drive my district, just to give you, for instance, Road 248 and Avenue 88, you've got natural waterways that when you have flood events that fill up with water and the water flows through, I'm seeing landfills put in, I'm seeing people plugging those up where the water can't get to the culverts and what you're gonna see there is road gone. So that's one area. The one that just comes to mind right now is Road 248 and Avenue 88. And F somebody out that way, you might take a look at that. But thanks for the report and I think being proactive is very, very strong. I know our last flood event, we lost the 224 bridge and now we're getting a contract to cure that problem permanently, hopefully. So, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I've got a couple of points before I take a motion. One is that just doing your inspections was very important. In the last flood event we had, Fire Chief at that time, Steve Sunnell, and we were, we were having flooding on Cottonwood Creek and, and he couldn't figure out what was happening. And he went down and he found a place where a farmer had built a, had built a dam across the creek to access both sides of the creek. And after a brief conversation, the farmer was quickly out there realizing the liability he might be incurring on himself and immediately removed it. So just the inspections are important and I think as Mike was, Mike and Supervisor Jones was talking about, where people have gone in and done things to change the landscape, especially like that, putting in dams or causeways or, I, I was thinking about that yesterday, I was driving home on 190, on, on Road 80, on the, on the St. John's River, you know, you've got a... as I was driving home on 190, on Road 80, on the St. John's River, you know, you've got a fence across the channel there and already there's stuff already backed up behind it now. Well, you can imagine in a flood situation what that's going to be like. So inspecting the channels, I think, was a very critical thing. And the other thing I was going to mention was, and this goes to what Supervisor Van Pult brought up about the private side. You know, the use of social media is, it can be very helpful. There's a site called My Job Depends on Ag, which is a very active website. It came out of people reacting to the attack on almond farmers about using ballast water to grow almonds and out of it has come this huge, my wife keeps me appraised at what's going on all the time there. The other is Facebook. So, and I'll just give you a quick example. Last week, we had an incident where my wife was pulling an old Vineyard trailer to her school where she works, the wheel fell off and so it sat there on the side of the road. Within 24 hours before we could get it rescued, somebody had hauled it off. And I filed a report with the Sheriff's Office, but my wife acted to alert the My Job Depends on Ag people and Facebook and we have our trailer back. And the people thought it was abandoned and they're very embarrassed about having taken it. So I don't even know who it is. They returned it to a third party, was giving it back to us. My point was that but for the social media, we would still not have that back. And it's just that there, if you let people know, the farmers, if they know, you know, they can respond, but they don't, they're not going to respond if they don't know. And the social media may be one of those vehicles that you would be able to utilize to help get that information out and take advantage of the equipment.
It's an amazing thing to watch you older gentlemen come to the realization of where this world's moving, so. Good job. Really glad to hear that.
You need to look further down the-
Okay.
All right. If there's no public comments, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval.
Anybody wanting to address this matter in the public? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Van Pult, second, and by Supervisor Sheedah. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Again, thank you so much. I really feel good about what we're doing and let's hope we need it this year. Okay, we, that concludes our items in open session. We have closed session items, including an addendum item, counsel, that we need to address in closed session.
Yes, your board has, on your board's closed session agenda and addendum, closed session agenda, items A through, well, the addendum one is also identified as A, but actually it should be F. Items A, B, and C are off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.